I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for joining our May 6 meeting. So we had the pledge of allegiance and we will start with any public number.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yep.
I was just going to open the agenda for today, like some of the discussions about what are the reasons. Are we not ready to have that discussion today? Or did we have that discussion already and then make a determination?
We can have that conversation today. It's actually, actually, hang on one second, that was important. So we can have that conversation if you want to have it right now, we can have it right now, whatever works. So, the conversation with the board is that you wanted us to stop delivering water or having Spindler take water.
Not just Spindler, every third party.
Well, every, every third party. So, at this point, the, and everybody else is very, very minor, like the town of Blooming Grove. They take, oh man, it's, it's not much at all, a couple of truckloads here and there. But as far as what we're doing with Spindler, the board wants to continue.
Is it just Spindler?
I'm sorry?
I'm saying Spindler, are we just talking about Spindler?
Well, Spindler is the one that's delivering water, and he's the only vendor doing it.
He's wholesaler, he's our only wholesaler.
He's the wholesale guy.
So, the board has, so the board met on this already and discussed this, or we're just discussing it now?
No, we've, we discussed it individually on the phone, and, um, after discussing it, you know, a little bit around it, we didn't have many meetings, we just talked on the phone. So the concurrence was that we're just going to continue as is with Spindler, because we are doing things with that revenue, money that's coming in.
So from my understanding, from our first budget meeting, I asked, and quote, "We're not talking about a lot of money."
No, that's not true.
It's on video.
Well, show me the video. But I believe the last time we had conversations about Spindler, yes, oh yeah.
During the budget hearing, I asked, "How much money do we make for the water leaving the village and that we sell?" And the statement was, "We're, we're not talking about a lot of money." So are we talking about a lot of money now? How much, and how much are we talking about?
I said, and I've said this at other meetings as well, Vinny, we made a hundred thousand dollars, approximately a hundred thousand dollars last year. To date this year, we've made fifty-six thousand, approximately.
So maybe we should stop wholesaling it, buy a tanker, and sell it ourselves, and let's make more money on it. Because obviously with the, the water rates that went up, people complaining about water and sewer.
Right.
Why are we wholesaling?
Well, because at the end of the day, to go out and buy a tractor-trailer and have somebody with an A-class license, I don't think we're going to be able to do that all year long. And I look at this as a temporary patch of us beginning, be able to get this revenue, because it's going to stop. And it's going to stop because the water source, yes it will.
No, it's not, they don't have the water, they need.
And you're connecting, if you follow it, where are they connecting to?
South Blooming Grove ain't connecting to it.
I'm sorry?
South Blooming Grove is not connecting to it.
Where are they going to get their water from?
Tell me where.
They're going to get it from New York City's.
That's KJ, that's not South Blooming Grove, they don't have the permit to connect to it, it's KJ, not, not South Blooming Grove.
And you know, it, when we get somebody water, Vinny, we don't, I'm not going to sit there and dictate, who gets the water and who doesn't get the water.
They cannot, we're aiding and abetting their expansion, we're giving them water, that's unacceptable, the board should be ashamed.
Well, it might be unacceptable to you, but we cannot dictate to a wholesaler where they want to do it.
They're knocking down trees, building houses, building apartments, you should be ashamed, the board should be ashamed.
Gentlemen, one at a time, please.
The board should be ashamed.
You should go to their meetings and.
The board, I, I watch every one of their meetings, the board should be ashamed. They're knocking down trees, they're knocking down bars, they're building multi-apartment buildings, they don't have the water. The DEC says they don't have the water, the Department of Health says they don't have the water, and we're giving them the water. You guys should be ashamed for allowing the water to leave this village.
Do you think that's going to stop the building?
Let them get the water from Walk Hill, because that's where they got to get it.
Yeah, well then, we'll potentially look at raising rates and doing other things.
If a hundred thousand dollars is going to put this village in a hole, then we have a lot of issues, then we need to fix some other problems.
No, it's preventing us from having to raise anything and to utilize that money. Because as soon as they connect to that aquifer, that tunnel of water, what's going on is going to be.
South Blooming Grove is not permitted to connect to it, KJ is permitted to connect to it.
Listen, I don't know the infrastructure of what's going to connect, but at the end of the day.
I watched the meetings every day.
Vinny, let him finish.
Okay.
South Blooming Grove is not permitted to connect, we're filling their tanks up, we're aiding their expansion, that's what we're doing.
Aren't they proposing wells, wells on site?
You know?
Oh yeah, where, where does that water come through? Our wells are connected to the.
You know what, Vinny, not for nothing, but also since twenty eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, water was being sold from Spindler at only six dollars per thousand. Out of there, and fortunately or unfortunately, Paul was in, you know, was on the board at those particular times. Again, who they were selling the water to, who they were selling the water to, didn't matter.
Did Spindler have a slow meter prior to that board coming on?
Yes.
And did they fix it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so what, so what did that mean?
Banks pillars.
If you take a look, if you want to, it shows your water bill. All right, we're getting off topic.
Oh, well you brought them up, you're bringing them up.
I know, but we're off topic now. All I'm trying to tell you is what, everybody's talking like this water is leaving the village within the last two years, wrong.
It's leaving a lot more now than it was two years ago, I'll tell you that right now.
Doesn't matter, our position, our position.
They're knocking down trees, building multi-building.
Then I suggest we go to the committee board meetings and discuss it with them.
Do we have a contract with Spindler?
No.
How are we, how are we documenting how much water is leaving? What is the policy in place that he comes and fills up his tanks? Are we doc, is it meter going into his truck?
Yes.
So we're doc, are we, I'll foil that, but we'll doc, we're documenting every gallon that's leaving Spindler, leaving that air.
I'll show you, I'll show you the deposits. You know, it's really about, again, us doing our due diligence and our fiduciary responsibility, not to dump everything that's going on on your shoulders to pay for things. We have an opportunity, and we are using it, to take those revenues and pay for over a hundred thousand dollars worth of engineering for the well over on the other side of the village. We're using that money to buy the Badger system, so we can get off this archaic nineteen sixty walk-around-the-village, So that we'll get ourselves back in, into a twenty-twenty, or a twenty-first-century system.
I'd rather you raise my rate than let that water leave the village.
And that's your personal opinion though, Vinny, you know what?
We're not going to have a village if you keep on letting them knock down that.
That's not true.
They're going to be coming over scumming up, and we're not going to, they're not going to have water, and we're just sending it down.
It's not true.
That's what we're doing. Raise the rate then to Spindler, double it, triple it, because it's a commodity, it should fluctuate, it should change.
Right, and then he'll just go to Walk Hill.
Let him pay the diesel, diesel's expensive, six dollars a gallon.
He's making the money, I guess, right?
Because he's making a lot of money delivering our water.
Okay, so, that's what they do.
Mike Presian, Mike Presian, three block three. Tom, can I ask you a question? So, this summer, do we, I mean, do we have enough wells in this village that we will never be on a water restriction over the summer?
Absolutely not. And when the wells get to, see, the difference, we don't have a lake, right? We have aquifers. That water comes and it goes. So whatever we're pulling out of the ground right now, and we obviously don't pull everything out of the ground, water continues to flow in that direction. So we either get it or we don't. If it doesn't rain, then we get to a certain level of our wells, and then we freeze any deliveries. Then he'll be done.
So there's a.
And then if it gets worse, that's the reason we're trying to develop the well over in High Grove. We just put online a well that's been dug for a long time, we just put that online a week, a week and a half ago, which runs twelve hours a day, and it's giving us sixty gallons per minute. And that's being put into our water system. We have two backup wells on the Spindler sit, on the Spindler property, now currently owned by the other gentleman, that we have access to if it becomes an emergency situation and we need water. And that's, you know, really at the end of the day, that's it. So, you know, it, again, we're not, we're, we're not a lake situation, we're not a reservoir situation, and we're not obviously connected to the New Windsor system, or the New York City system that New Windsor takes advantage of. And obviously, other communities have done the same.
Would it be beneficial to like, maybe during the hot summer months when it's, to maybe cease the sale of the water during that period?
Yeah.
So that we don't have to.
When it gets to a certain level, Mike, we, we stop, that's it. We stop. Because again, it's there, it's flowing, it's not in a basin where it seems unlimited, right? It's water flowing by. Our, our wells are forty, forty-two feet deep, and you're, we can pull seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons of water out of there, five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons a day, and that's what we do. And again, now we've got the other well online, the sixty-gallon one, and we're working to get the other well on High Grove developed, and it's going through the engineering paces right now. And that's, that's what we're pushing for.
Are they measuring the wells of all their?
Every day.
They measure the wells?
Every day.
Okay, so there's a cutoff point, or you anticipate the weather getting hot for the next, say, three weeks or a month, you, you stop the water before that?
Absolutely.
The sale of water?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they're, they're monitored every day. We get, I get a text every day of the letter, or the level from, from the water guys. And the engineer will also. Yes?
I don't see any update on the pickleball. Oh, sorry, Nancy Donaldson, Fort Emerson Drive. Is there any updates on the pickleball courts?
Yes, so for the pickleball, I'll say a few words, and if Steve wants to jump in, but basically, the exterior fence has been installed. The two fences on the inside of the court have not been, the poles are there, we didn't install the fence, because we're waiting for the paint person to put the acrylic finish down, and then paint the lines. Once that's all set, then the interior fencing will go up. We have the nets, the, the poles have been drilled, and it's just a matter of that point, putting the nets up, and it's ready for play.
Sean Hegarty for Bellboy Drive. Looks like you're going to answer some of the questions I've asked previously.
Right.
I'll see what happens with that. But there was another one I asked, and that was the cost per hour per village employee, all in on what it costs for them when they're out reading the meters. Medical benefits, social security, unemployment, whatever is paid. Like you said, it was twenty-six or thirty dollars, is it really seventy or eighty hours? You said the other company was eighty-six dollars. And then the loss of time for work on village projects, what does that cost to us? There's a lot of storm drains that could have been started already. I don't know, it looks like the floodway may have been worked on, but was that complete?
Yes.
They did both sides of it?
They did the left side, the side that was leaking, and the other side was not leaking.
Well, the other side's going to leak as soon as the water comes to the level of the floodway.
Well, it's.
Have you walked over there?
No, I saw the pictures.
Go take a walk over there.
Well, when we discussed it, right, it was the one side that was, was draining around the concrete.
Right.
The other side was high enough that it wasn't doing that.
It's at the level of the concrete.
And the level, the level of.
You're, you're not fixing the, the problem, so that's still going to go around the concrete. The whole idea that concrete being in a V, on both sides, being built up, is so the water goes out slowly. You're low on the right side, or we'll call it the east side, it's just going to start flowing out there, and you're going to get too much water coming out still. It's half done, everything around here is half done. You pave the road, you don't put the lines up. We have a line machine, why don't they get out there and put the lines up? You're doing historic, you're doing historic signs. Is, are they all done? Because there's definitely one that's not, I don't know.
Chris, they were all done, weren't they?
They're the ones that I was told to do.
That's right, we took down everyone that we knew.
Well, then nobody can see the one on two oh eight by the animal hospital?
She wasn't on the list.
Yeah, we, we got that.
Everybody's got eyes, it's a historic marker, needs to be done.
We got that information from, I think, the historian. If it was missed, we'll go out and get it.
It's from the depot that was there.
I'm sorry?
The depot, there was a depot, it's a historic marker for the depot.
The old E train?
Yes.
It's down by my house there?
Mm-hmm, there's a sign right there. So, nothing gets completed.
Well, I beg to differ with that, because there is more stuff that gets done. The problem is, with a limited staff, you can't get everything done that everybody sees at the same time, or even in the summer, right?
Why can't we do that?
We waited for Emerson Drive, we waited for C Court for, for a couple of years. We've, we've waited for a lot of things to happen. It's time, it's resources, we'll get you, you know, even if the guys were making an average of twenty-five dollars an hour, and it's ten guys, eleven guys that are going out, he's the eleven, and we're going to be hiring one of the gentlemen tonight on DPW, and filling a vacancy that we've, that's, has been there, and it's budgeted. So at the end of the day, a lot of stuff is getting done, a lot of stuff is getting done, and.
I understand a lot of stuff, you know, when a project started, it should be completed.
Well, when we looked at that project, to be honest, we did, the right side of that thing wasn't a problem. The water level, when it's low, is, is actually, or average, is at the level of what they call three oh five. Up above that, it's level of three oh eight. And that, when we were there, and water was running either through it and coming across the concrete, there was nothing going around the right side. We'll watch it, that's all I can, we'll watch it.
Needs to be fixed, needs to be done. You should go back to the original plans and see how it was built, and rebuild it the way it was.
Right, but we didn't take anything out, so what was on the right side of that little covert is what was there. And what's under it is, it was either dirt and/or rock.
It all got washed out. That was not how it originally was, that's the last thing I would say about it.
Well, I can tell you, we are, and we have been pulling maps, trying to find out exactly what that pond is all about. That pond, the bigger pond, is DEC regulated, the other one by the playground park is not DEC regulated. So we're trying to find out from DEC, what if anything, has or needs to be done, or what we're supposed to be doing with a retention-detention pond. We're, we're waiting to hear from our folks up at either Orange County and/or DEC, and I'm assuming he's talking to the guys on old it.
I've spoken to a few of them.
I'm sorry?
I've spoken to a few of them, and it should be brought back to. Spindler, or Rieger put that in there because he had to.
Right.
Not because he wanted to make a lovely pond.
Right.
It was to stop flooding and take the drainage off all the land that he did the same thing that was on South Blooming Grove, built houses on.
Right.
And that's why all the green land is there too.
Right.
So that it will absorb the water.
Right.
But it was done for a purpose, and that's still needed, that purpose is still needed.
Right. And that's why, again, we're pulling the maps. We haven't been able to find anything from a construction standpoint of what it looked like when it was built. So we are trying.
Spindler would have, or Rieger would have.
I, well, we should have them upstairs, our next step, if we didn't find them upstairs, and we did find some apps, but we just haven't had a chance, we found them today, actually. We haven't had a chance to go through them, otherwise, we're going to go up to Orange County, and have them pulled, and see what they say.
You can get them online.
Yeah, and see what they say. The other thing I can just tell you, the depth, we don't know, again, looking at their drawings that we were able to find, again, it shows an average of the water level at elevation three oh five, and the high elevation's at three oh eight, but it doesn't give any information on the depth of the pond itself. And when we, I had that measured when the fountains were installed, and it's approximately five feet, and somewhere in the middle. So I don't know if it was ten feet at one point, twelve feet, five feet, don't know. So hopefully, we'll find out.
The higher the water raises, the more it will kill the reeds, and will open up more room for the water it gets to.
Well, again, it depends on the level. Like I said, the average level of that thing as it was designed was at a elevation of three oh five, and a high elevation is three oh eight. Nothing beyond that that they was, was shown on the maps to think that they would ever be potentially higher than that. So, I don't know, more to, you know, more to be, more to be looked at. Paul?
Hey, Paul, I'm Ted Pritchard Lane. The, I, I, I'm sorry, Tom, I don't remember ever hearing those numbers.
Which one?
Fifty-six thousand, fifty-six thousand or a hundred thousand revenue from the water being sold.
Well.
So that's, you're saying it's in the minutes? Does anybody on the board?
I'm saying, I've said it before, and I think I said it during the budget process, is I can't name the meeting, but it has been said.
It's in, so it would be in the minutes of a meeting, that I could read and see. I, I, I remember saying not much, I remember hearing not a lot, not much.
I don't know why I would have said that, because at that point, we already went almost a whole year, you know, I mean, I don't know. I mean, you'd have to bring it back, and we'd have to look.
Is that, is that a, is that a foil request, where I could, I could see where, what minutes?
Well, the minutes are online, you should be able to look at.
So I'll look through all the minutes, I'll see if I see that.
Yeah.
Because I don't, I've been to most meetings, but.
Well, listen, the bottom line is, it's a hundred K that we got last year, and we're.
All right, so that's what you're saying now, okay, fine, that's what you're saying now.
Yep.
Another thing on water, you know, the water bills came out. Do we have a number on, on how much we collected on the tax rolls from unpaid water bills?
I have to verify with the clerk what was actually paid, because not everybody paid their tax bill. As far as the number from the re-levee, if you would like to meet me afterwards, I'll gladly share that number with you.
Could you, could you present it at a meeting, maybe?
Sure.
Okay, and I've been having a conversation the last couple of weeks with the school, concerned of the budget. Now, the school's got a hundred and twenty-nine million dollar budget being proposed, in addition to a forty-three million dollar bond, that's going to be a fifteen-year bond. So I had to ask a couple of questions about school buses and some other things, they want to put a turf field in, that was one of my questions. But in the conversation that we had, I asked the superintendent of business, he says superintendent of business, about the water bills. I says, does he, as a resident, I'm curious, does the school district pay their water bills on time? And if not, do we charge them penalties?
Absolutely.
Okay, but we charge them penalty, what are the penalties, two percent?
Yes, the same as they are for any other.
So they're paying the penalties, but who's paying that penalty? Me, and that was my point to the superintendent, is that you're not paying that water. I said, why, what do you do with the water bill? We get the water bill, we verify it's correct, and then we pay it. How long does that take? I don't know.
I can tell you that I have seen their bills stamped in, in February second, and I don't get paid till the end of March. Or we don't get paid, I should say, till the end of March.
Okay, and I think that's something that the community as a, you know, as a whole should address to the school. It's not anything you guys that, you can't tell somebody to pay their water bill, because there's a lot of residents that don't pay their water bill also. I just thought it was kind of, kind of high. And Tom, yes, Spindler paid six dollars per, for whatever, per hundred, per thousand gallon, but you know what, that was the same price that they would be in charge when you were on the board and when you were mayor.
I know.
Okay? So it wasn't because I was doing the water at the time.
The question.
Excuse me, it wasn't because I was doing the water at the time, we came in, I corrected the water, that we made a lot of money on Spindler. They paid a lot of money in bills when we corrected it.
Yeah, I have the bills, I have the amounts that go back to twenty-twelve, and.
I mean, when you were, when you were, when you were on, when you were on the board, when you were on the board, when you were president, of mayor, Brotherhood Winery was also getting over on us by paying per gallon when they get charged per cubic foot of water.
Right.
So, please.
That system had.
Accept some responsibility.
Absolutely. Listen, no one, no one's running away from the responsibility of what it was. You had billing clerks, you had people to know, and if that was missed, it was missed. I mean, we have found more stuff in the last year with meters running backwards for, for years, meters that have been logged.
You're talking to the liar.
I know, but the person, the billing person went in, just changed the amount.
Yeah.
Didn't fix the problem.
That was what we, that was what I found when I came in too. Yeah, people came in to complain, and they changed the numbers.
It was.
But the number kept on running.
And it's, it's getting better, but, you know, the plan is, tonight, we're going to approve the Badger system, and start off slowly, and start changing out of our meters with the Badger meters, which will be cellular, and you manage it yourselves, and you'll know every day what kind of water you're using.
Other than, other than Spindler, who takes water out of, or DPW there?
The town.
The town?
Doesn't Tam?
What do they do with it? What do they do with the water?
I don't know.
Do we charge the town?
Yes.
You have that power wash guy who comes in and fills up every now and then?
And it bills like four dollars.
Do we, does Tam, does Tam take water out?
They took some water out last year, I haven't seen any water come out this year.
All right.
Very little.
Well, also, when there's film shooting in the location, they'll fill up a truck from us and purchase. When they did like last year at Weir's, they had to have a tanker on site, they purchased that through us. This guy, he doesn't come very often, I think he does some kind of power washing or something, he'll fill up occasionally.
Diane?
Yeah? Dr. Glasses on site, good seeing you. Good evening, just a couple of questions, I haven't been.
Pat, please.
What's your name?
Oh, Diane, Mac, twenty-five Tappo Drive.
Thanks, ma'am.
This lady spoke about the pickleball courts, and my question was, what do you anticipate them being up and ready?
I don't know, because we didn't get a date yet from the, from the painter, and we had, you want to fill that in, Steve?
Yeah, we had a painter all lined up to do the latex, and evidently, he had surgery, and his doctors, time, we can't do it for six weeks.
Is your mic on? So the bottom, the, we had a guy lined up to do it. When the fence external, the exterior fence was installed, we reached out to him, and we had found out that he had some type of surgery, and his doctors are recommending that he needs a little time off. So we're working on Plan B, one of the other vendors, or somebody that we could find who's done pickleball and tennis-type ball paintings and stuff like that, and Steve's working on that now.
Okay, because a few weeks ago, I spoke with Ron Girallaman and.
Kathy Escaveta?
No, Wayne Patrick.
Wayne Patrick?
And they said the one in the town, in the village, behind home, whatever, the corner candlestick store, that was going to be up in June.
Okay.
I drove by the other day, it's not going to be up in June, so I know we're close. Is it going to be monitored, like, have there going to be rules, regulations? You could get, you know, you lose, you got to get off the court, you can't stay on the court.
You got to go home? Okay, we'll send you home.
I think you're going to have to monitor it, put signs up somewhere, rules, regulations, just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we wanted to try to do is, it'll be locked in the evenings, right? We'll open it up at seven o'clock in the morning. The lights that are there are not functional at the moment, so we're working on the grant, for the wiring and the replacement of the lights on the poles. So, you know, for the foreseeable future, it'll be a daytime court up until whatever time it gets start. And I think we just kind of monitor and see what's kind of traffic it brings, to figure out, you know, can you play a back-to-back game if you win?
Well, if you win, yes, but if you lose, you can't stay on the court.
Right, you got to, you know, and then.
And then you have to have some respect, you know, to the next person, just wondering, just a question.
Yeah.
The other question is, and it's not from me, it's from some people who always ask me. Diane, why didn't the rest of the hockey rink get paved?
Money.
We didn't think we, we didn't think we would have the money for completing that side of the court. So, as we're developing this, and we think now that we'll probably have enough money to pave that without too much, because we didn't know all the costs when we, we were waiting for the quotes to come in for the fence, the netting, the painting, and it just, it took an enormous amount of time, it's crazy. But I think we have enough.
Wasn't that Rieger's money that?
Right.
Yeah. So we have no more reason money to pave the whole thing?
We have, eighty-seven came in from Rieger, and I've been putting the US, the Bus Coach USA money into the recreation fund. And that's, you know, eight or nine hundred dollars potentially a month, kind of a thing, depending on how many days.
So we didn't have the money to finish all this?
No, I said, we, we wanted to wait until we knew all of our costs before we went and paved that. that side of, of the court itself. And then we could leave it blank, empty, because whatever futuristic stuff could happen. I mean, if pickleball picked up and people wanted more courts, then we could build more courts. We could leave it open.
Which is fine, but the truck was there.
No, I understand that.
That's just not, people ask, we park up, park down, we're going to walk.
Tell them that at the time, we weren't sure we were gonna have enough money to pave the whole thing. We didn't, the problem is, if we paved the whole thing, right, and then we were short on money, and we couldn't finish the fence, or anything else, then we didn't accomplish anything other than paving the, the ground.
It doesn't need fencing, it just needs a blacktop so that-
Not, not when you talk to people who play pickleball.
No, no, I'm just saying-
Because they sit there and say, if they hit the ball, and I gotta go running fifteen, twenty yards every time the ball leaves the court.
No, no, what I'm saying is that other half should have been left a blank slate, a blacktop. That's all I'm saying. A lot of people are asking that question.
And that was thirty-some odd thousand dollars, and we wanted to make sure that we had the money before we committed ourselves.
Okay.
And, and really to get those three courts done.
I'm not done. I have a couple of questions, I'm sure.
Sure, keep going.
Okay, Sean asked about the lines on A-her. When are they gonna be put down?
It's being scheduled.
From when?
It's being scheduled. Chris is working on that now with the painter.
Okay, because that stretch of road now is a raceway.
Yeah.
Nobody stops, okay? They go flying down there. They think it's a racetrack. I don't know why. There's no line.
Because it's flat and they can-
Does that make you say, slow down when a line is there? A stop, a white line at the stop sign?
So, all I can tell you to do is, is let us know so that we could have the police department out there doing radar.
Well, that's my, uh, that's another thing on my list.
Okay.
Okay, can we enforce the law here? Okay, disrespect, okay? Um, Puritan and Capital. The cars come flying down that street like nobody's business, nobody stops. Now, there's new kids in the area.
Right.
They ride their bikes down the hill. They think it's the best thing to go flying down the hill without stopping. Someone's gonna get-
So they run the stop sign?
Yes. Well, the kids.
Alright, has anybody called the police since this has been going on?
Just now.
Well, I, I know I've complained in past years, but I'm here tonight.
Okay.
And I'm asking for the stop signs to be watched. I walk in the morning, eight o'clock in the morning. You would not believe the people who fly down Decker Drive to get their kids in school, because they don't put them on the school bus.
Right.
And then, oh, we're five minutes late, now we're doing ninety down Decker, and we're not stopping for the stop signs.
Right.
That's all I'm saying, okay?
But, listen, you're out there, eyes and ears, just call.
And I'm bringing it to you, that's why I'm here now.
So, we can get somebody out there right away, just dial nine-one-two-three, and you'll be talking to a dispatcher and we can take care of it.
By that time, the car's down. This is what happens, car goes flying down, right? They got the kid in school, they gotta get the kid to town, they come back, not the lollygagging.
Okay.
Well, why didn't you leave five minutes earlier? That's what I wanna say to these people, and stop at the stop sign. What are you teaching your child who's in the car? Disrespect, but that's my opinion.
Yeah.
Okay, the other question is, the potholes. Um, I know it's a state road, two oh eight and ninety-four, but when you make that right, onto ninety-four from two oh eight, there's a steel plate there.
Mm-hmm.
There was a cone on it, the cone is gone.
Right.
And now, you know, that's just a dangerous situation. The one outside Brotherhood Plaza. You turn, you're hitting a pothole.
Yep.
Okay, I know that the state was up on two oh eight past Saint Mary's, 'cause all those potholes are, you know, built in.
Yeah.
So why didn't the ones on ninety-four get done, and our two oh eight?
That's a question for the state. We have reached out to them several times. They did fill it in. I wanna say, where are we? May, April, maybe March?
What did they fill in?
They did fill it in once, that I noticed, when we called.
What, what hole?
The hole that you're talking about on ninety-four when you're exiting Brotherhood making noise.
No, that, that is huge.
I know. No, I know that, but it was filled. It was, it was, I can, I-
I, I, I make a difference, but that's a whole other thing.
No, but, just, we've called, and, you know, what, what leverage we have on the state to fill a pothole is probably not great. I did see the trucks out, two oh eight coming down from South Booming Grove in this direction? I mean, I almost blew a tire. So, trust me, at the end of the day-
Maybe we should continue calling, send our emails, but let's get somebody out here to fit, fix these potholes. It's ridiculous.
I know.
Okay?
Diane, if I could just say something, Mike Resiello, we want you, uh, Senator Scoopis sent out an email to people, and I specifically raised that, I sent that pothole in, the one by Brotherhood Plaza and the other one.
Right.
And I also talked about the low, uh, storm drain right outside of like, uh, where the, where the, uh, it's right across from where they used to have the door, uh, with the new tobacco shop, it's right there. There's a low pocket, there's a low storm drain right here. I said, it's worse than a pothole, that frickin' thing, and it's a turning lane, and I told them, I put it on the list with Scoopis.
Right.
And it's been, it's been about a month now, nothing. State doesn't do anything. It's not these guys, it's not these guys.
Maybe all of you could email James Scoopis, I'll do it, but I think it would be a little bit more pronounced if it comes from the board. Just saying.
And I'll send an email to, uh, Assemblyman Moore and also Senator Scoopis. We'll let them know.
Diane, the three's guest near Seven, Seven Puritan. I know all the kids, they play up on that cul-de-sac, so they all, they play in my yard as well, um, which is fine, but I will contact parents and let everyone know if that's what they're doing, because I've noticed it too. Um, and I'm even thinking about putting cones on Puritan, because now the kids that were kids when I moved in are now teenagers, and I've even seen parents driving quickly on the streets, so.
Yeah, no, they don't stop for that stop sign.
So.
Um, the garage sale signs that are all over, if you have a garage sale, take the sign away after the sale. There's one on the corner of Decker and Congress, the houses for Congress. The sale was in March, I think. The sign is still up. You put it up, take it down. It's common courtesy to everybody else. But being that there were more yard sales a few weeks ago, people put their signs up, you gotta take them down. It just doesn't look good.
That is in our codes too.
Yeah, it should be down. We'll send out the building inspector, pick them up, pick them out.
Yeah, it just doesn't look good.
And so that's what we're gonna do.
And my last question is, which I can't find anywhere, what were the election results for the village board? I couldn't find it anywhere.
Um, we'll send you those results. I don't know them off the top of my head, but we'll send it to you.
Okay, I'd love to, you know, I'd just like to know who won, how much, when.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vinny?
Good man. Deputy Mayor, I'm calling for our court. Deputy Mayor Jack Russe just said, you know, we have codes to that. I brought up in previous meetings, we have a lot of codes on the books that are being enforced, a lot. I brought up the enforcement officer that we don't have, I know we got, you know, the building inspector, he's got his hands tied, we've got thousands of other things he's doing on. But there's so many properties out here that look like shit. Now, especially with the warm season coming, the animal and the grass, multiple houses with blue tarps, we need to start enforcing the village code that we have on the books. We need to, you know, broken window dirty, fix the stuff that looks like garbage out there. Make the village look better.
Couldn't agree more. Can't tell you how many times I've sent them out.
One more, one more. Sixty-two East Main, I walked by there today, it's up to my thigh, the grass.
Sixty-two, sixty-one.
Well, like this man said, enforcing code, it is-
Five Maple, and if you see them, let us know, because we have a list.
Well, I'm telling you, I walked by, the grass is up to my thigh. Anything could be in there, you know, snakes, raccoons, stumps.
Mike Resiello, Tom, why doesn't the village mow the property and tax them? If that's what they-
We do.
Well, we have.
We do, and here's the process, that we give the violations.
Yeah.
Stabilizes, we have to give them thirty days to respond.
Really? Thirty days?
Yeah, which is crazy, right?
Wow.
So then we can, we sit there, and then we have a potential hearing to bring them to the table, to ask them why they're not doing it. And then we hire a landscaping company, potentially, or we, could go in and charge X amount of dollars to mow that property. That's, that's the process.
Is that, is that thirty-day limit? Is that, can that be reset by the board, say fifteen days, or?
Chris, can you, can you comment on that?
I can. So, the thirty-day limit is for violations of the New York Building and Uniform Building and Fire Code. For other violations, zoning, general maintenance, the thirty-day period doesn't apply on my reading of the regulation that, that the deputy mayor mentioned. But, for serious issues, the building inspector could and should. Even for viola- so even for violations of the, the Uniform Building and, and Fire Code, there's a thirty-day cure period, but you don't actually have to provide that cure period. So, the building inspector could just go straight to a notice of appearance if he so chose, rather than issue a notice to cure. In fact, I, I did, that's in the emails that I was sending on Friday. Yes.
Hey, look, we uncovered something, right?
Yeah.
And I do know that the village code for grass height the maximum is nine inches.
Well, we gotta do something about the garbage, the blue tarps, you know.
We, he has, he sounds like you, uh, where all Donna and I are like-
You're preaching to the choir, I promise you.
We had over on, what was that cul-de-sac, two, three houses with blue tarps have received notices already. One house, and I don't wanna give out addresses, had so much stuff in the driveway and under their front porch. They have now begun to clean it up, because they had a court appearance coming up. Another one that was operating a business, and a couple of the ones that are operating businesses in residential zones, have received letters that we will not tolerate that. The commercial trucks that are too big to be parked in their driveways, that don't meet our code, have gotten letters.
Okay.
Just to add to that, Vinny, we just put together a meeting, we're offering for all the business owners in the village. And we're also inviting the chamber to clean up signage, because that's been a very big issue. We get complaints constantly. Flags, banners, those are actually against code. They're permitted while sign is, um, in, you know, before a board, before it gets approval, before it gets made, but after that, they're supposed to come down. We wanna have a friendly meeting, so we can all be on the same page, you know, our businesses, we wanna welcome. But, they also need to conform, and, you know, we're trying to, as you know, get back to that historical integrity that the village once had. Mike?
Just one more thing, Donna, Mike Resiello, Three Long Street, regarding that, right? The little, um, parking area in front of, um, Captain J and those places, those people sell food, right? They, they've got plates and stuff, people put, I walk through there, I pick up stuff and throw it in the garbage. I don't understand why the business owners, and this is something you may wanna ask them, to like, just police that area. It should be, it should be pristine, it should be, you know, inviting. You know, the other place terrible is over by Dunkin' Donuts. That's terrible. If you walk through there, I walk over to the pharmacy, sometimes pick up prescriptions. The garbage by, by Autozone and, um, and by Dunkin' Donuts especially, you got Subway there, right? Who's there? I've never been in a place with Subway. Um, you know, so if you do talk to the businesses, that's gonna take some, you know, responsibility to try to clean up the place.
You know, we just recently did the bidding there, so we know there are picnic benches put out there. It's a nice little area now.
Yes, yeah, it is nice.
We're going to keep it maintained.
Yeah, it shouldn't be all on the DPW, that happens to all that stuff.
I'm curious to see who shows up. You know, the invites went out last week.
Yeah.
There were, how many on that list, over a?
Fifty?
Oh, no, way more.
Oh, no, we, we got-
Way more.
About-
We were over a hundred.
Yeah, there was a lot. That's not what, not including what-
Not including the chamber yet, and that's separate. I'm curious to see how many are gonna attend.
Well, you can just explain to them, say, residents are asking for business-
Well, that's just it, we wanna have an open dialogue, just to have the conversation. Because we were gonna put a letter together, which we did. We never mailed, mailed it out, um, because we didn't, we didn't wanna turn business owners off, we didn't wanna, we didn't want it to appear like it was a threat. Let's have the conversation. You know, what do you need? Here's what our goal is. You know, how can we work together? How can we achieve this? It's gonna benefit everybody, right? Where do you like to go and spend your time on a weekend? What, what municipalities, what villages have that reputation that you'd like to walk through? That's what we're trying to, to achieve here.
One of the things the area down there, those businesses are trying to talk about is, um, closing, closing the parking lot on weekends after a certain hour, and barricading all the driveways and putting up tables and having entertainment and serving out, outdoor dinners. So I think that would, you know, be a nice plus, an enhancement, something different, and anybody that has a business down there could participate. Just figuring out, you know, their chairs and their tables and where they wanna put them, I think it would be a good, a good thing. And then something similar to Goshen for enhancing that area as well is putting up, uh, you know, mini, you know, those little mini lights, the Edison lights, over the area, and connecting the wires to the buildings. We've got those property owners permission, and those lights could be just strung across the parking lot, and again, just making it look, uh, you know, real nice at the end of the day. So, you know, that's all part of the meeting, all part of the discussions, and, um, you know, there's a lot of positive businesses down there now. And, um, so we'll see where it goes, we'll see where that takes us.
We'll try to bring the planner into that as well.
Yeah.
The DPW did a nice job at the E.J. McLaughlin Square, I've seen it there.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody's taking, you know, pride of what, what's going on. It's just, you know, one thing at a time, and there's so much to be done. You wanna knock it all out in one shot, but it's, it's difficult. You know, so, we'll try to pace through it, figure it out. Anything else, maybe?
I second it. Did we plant a lot of new equipment, trucks, and change the logos on the DPW?
We put logos on the vehicles. We did not, we bought a new truck last year.
Lovely shit.
But everything had been, um, we lettered the trucks, yes.
What was the matter with the lettering that was on it, and what did it cost us to change?
There wasn't, in most of the trucks, there was no lettering, and what lettering was there, it was a mishmash.
It was an oval thing, right?
The old oval thing, which was a magnet, um, that deteriorated with the color, and you couldn't really see it. There were a couple of trucks that had some black, uh, lettering on it, and it just started to look kinda iffy, and with all the other trucks that we had, with all the pickups, nothing was identified. None of our hardware, none of our excavating equipment, any of that stuff, you, you could have seen it, but you don't know who might have owned it and who was doing what. So, we went out to a couple of lettering different companies. They liked this particular company, it was the best price, and, um, so we lettered the trucks, both doors, on all of our village vehicles.
What was the cost of that?
Remember, Chris was-
Give me approximate.
Two, two grandish?
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five, just number there, twenty, twenty-five.
Alright.
Yeah, yeah. We removed the old insignias and so forth, whatever was left, and then the company came in and did that work. Anything else? Okay, so we'll move on to announcements and discussions. Uh, first is just, uh, a follow-up on some of the paving projects that we're looking at this year, Lincoln Drive. Chris is working on those plans, and that will be an in-house project with, uh, our DPW, and if any assistance might be needed, we'll reach out to the town. Um, for North Street, uh, the bid specs have been written, and we will be going out to bid for the drainage work that needs to be done, and to follow up on that, there's a new paving company, Ward, that has the county bid. And Chris will be narrowing down those dollars to figure out what the increase is over the last year, and seeing what it would take to pave, uh, North Street. And depending on how much money we have, we'll potentially take it up to Avorn Boulevard, and if possible, we wanna take it up, obviously, to Tap School. And if we can then go further out, then we'll take it, obviously, to the border. Because there is a bad area between Canterbury and Decker that needs work.
That was what I was just gonna say. Canterbury needs to be done desperately.
Yeah.
That is horrendous, that road.
Yeah, there's a bunch. And we're looking at a couple of different ways to do the paving. And different, I'll call it technology, but different processes. But that one, yeah, that one's in bad shape, just like Lincoln. Lincoln is in really, really bad shape. Chris has a priority list. We have a spreadsheet and we have the Dodgers Associated. One of those projects, but obviously with the new year comes increases and we're doing the price adjustments so we can budget properly. So we have those. And the other two that we need to finish, I believe, we're trying, still it planned in May, is Peacock and Mountainburg. Last year, we were able to get an initial coat, build up the edges of the road. And we were able to get one course on there. We need to get the second course to finish that completely, so that's also in the works.
They just used milling stuff over there, didn't they?
Mm-hmm.
We just did milling stuff over there.
No, they paved. They did some millings and stuff to build up the shoulders and then they paved a base course. Next is flower pots and plantings and so forth for the downtown areas for the planters that we have. We're planning on May eighteenth to do that, probably around eight-thirty, nine o'clock. If any organizations are interested and want to participate in planting. We have thirty of those. They'll be going out shortly, being put in place. And then we will be able to do the plantings again on the May eighteenth, the week before Memorial Day, which is the twenty-seventh. Second is the, obviously, the Memorial Day Parade is May twenty-seventh, the same format, same route as it's been. We have a few more interested parties that want to be involved in it. We have a different, an additional car club that wants to be involved. There's an Irish dancing, potentially an additional bag and pipe band. And hopefully some additional army, military type vehicles. So we're waiting on that. The next is the donated tree program. So if anyone is interested in, we do have the applications. I believe they're online as well as on the board over here or on the desk. We're looking at doing the plantings on June first. It's, that program took off a little bit slow, but this will be something that'll be ongoing. So it's not going to be a one-time shot because again, we're trying to beautify our Avorn Boulevard area with these trees. So we'll come up with a date. We'll advertise it when we expect to have all the applications. And the nursery that we've agreed to go with has all the trees that are necessary.
Can I ask what nursery? Nancy Donaldson, what, I'm so...
I'm sorry?
Can I ask what nursery?
Orange County. It's on thirty-two, next to Castle. Yeah, it's, I'm not quite sure if that's Central Valley yet, but the owner, it's a second entrance when you go in towards Woodbury. And it's a tree, they have all sorts of heavy landscaping type stuff.
And how many trees have people committed to?
Chris, do you have a, Christine, do you have a file of how many trees potentially?
Right now, I think it's about ten.
Ten trees. And the Girl Scouts are gonna plant a tree on May fifteenth, part of their badge program, so we're gonna do that. And we'll start at Newcastle. We'll bring it to Winchester and then beyond as we're doing the program. So we're looking forward to that as well. Let's see, update on the veterans banner. So far to date, I have potentially thirteen banners that we can be ordering. Everything has been set. We've been talking to the banner company. So the plan is to get these banners backed in time so we can have them up and installed prior to the Memorial Day Parade. And it's kind of cool looking at all the pictures of people. Some still with us, some unfortunately have passed, but families are pretty excited about it. So we'll see. And the price right now, I guess based on eleven is probably about two-hundred-and-eleven dollars. It's a two-by-four foots, two-foot-by-four-foot sign. And it's similar to what you've already seen on the table of American, kind of American flag background with the inset of the person and below would be the name and military branch, et cetera. So that's been actually going pretty well. We hope to get that ordered in by Friday so that we can, you know, hopefully meet the company's deadlines. So we're working on that as well. We had applied a few months ago for Orange County Tourism Grant and we received word that we have been accepted for a four-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine-dollar grant. Last year, we used it for part of the celebration. You know, as far as using it for the band for the July Indoor Memorial Day. So we haven't received that check yet, but I'm waiting to send all the paperwork in, sign everything, just waiting to have the supervisor or the executive, Steve Newhouse, sign off on it so we could receive our check. Next would be also from Orange County Legislature's Grant Program, a four-thousand-nine-hundred-ninety-nine-dollar additional grant. We used this last one last year to purchase the crossing sign, crossing lit sign for Taff School. That'll be going up hopefully shortly. And this will allow us to buy the second one on the other side and disconnect it. It's solar. So we can disconnect that from electric, remove that one and save a few dollars on electric and power. So that's all in motion as well. So the follow-up items from the previous meeting, as we've already discussed, we've talked about the retention pond. The status of the Woodfield Skateboard Park is that we're still unfortunately waiting on this company to tell us. They can either get us the parts or they can't. And we've emailed, called, done a thousand different things for the, one particular company that, that had the original order. So they were the manufacturer. They told us that they're no longer making the equipment and that kind of skateboard stuff. But we're trying to see if they can get us the part to refurbish and bring the other, the equipment that we have, make it safe so we could use it again. And so there's more to follow on that. Discussion on the water meters, that discussion's happening. And if you want to fill in...
We are circulating now a revision of our code. It's not just putting in the second meters. All of our water code really needs revision. We've gone through the engineer, our wood professional, and now we're getting our DPW to review it. It is the intention, don't hold me to it, but it's the intention to try and get this done before the end of the month. So our June meeting, we can have, set the public hearing to revise them. It is a lot. It's putting in, and I really have big education, putting in irrigation meters. There is a whole, whole lot to it, including having rain shut-offs and everything installed with them. So it's a lot more code than one would think.
Cool. Thank you. Okay. So next was the hydroelectric plant down in Salisbury Mill. So had conversations with the DE, no, not quite DEC, but they're New York State and they monitor all the dams. So that particular dam, he was trying to get some information and bring it to my, bring it to me so I could understand a little bit better as to what the regulation is on that dam. I do have some information that I can share. I just don't know if I have it in my packet. But really what it shows is the height of the dam, the length of the dam. The only thing that's on there, as far as the gentleman I was on the phone with, is that currently, if you go down there, Sean, you'll see the level of the top of the dam and then towards the opposite side where the buildings are, there's a cutout. So that water just flows as the, as the water level is dropping. He wasn't sure of any kind of gates or anything and that's what he was looking at. To see if there was any kind of floodgates at the bottom that could help the village if, in an event of, you know, potential flooding. So I'm waiting for him to get back to me on that piece.
Well, if there's not, they should ask them to put something in to lower it. They're making electricity, they're making money, but they could be costing us money for floods.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I agree. And we've had that into, with our local legislators and it was before Mar and Scoofus. But once I get information back from him, then we'll have a better intelligent conversation. We can see what we can tackle with those guys.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And the last item, I kind of think we've already kind of talked about, was the fiscal stress that someone said that they didn't potentially see on their website. And again, I was, most of that was because there was nothing submitted. So there was really nothing for them to give us any kind of status, which to me doesn't make any sense. I think New York State should have been on the ball and should have been in here potentially the second year after there was no audits, no AUDs, nothing submitted from a financial standpoint. They should have been knocking on the door to say, where's your information? But that didn't occur and we're in the situation we are right now. The audits are still going on. The state is in here doing their audit. We have PKF still doing the twenty, they're starting, hopefully winding down on twenty-one and jumping into twenty-two. The other auditors of BST have submitted the AUDs, they have a new term for that now, for the twenty-twenty. He's preparing, preparing the twenty-one. Now, the bad news with all of this is that there isn't, there's such a lack of data and information and documentation and just stuff in general, that these auditors' reports are pretty much inconclusive. They've got a lot to say about what happened as far as policies were concerned and procedures and documentation and just basic financial, you know, day-to-day activities, just wasn't there, didn't happen. For the obvious reason we've already discussed, that we didn't have a treasurer and didn't, they weren't using the application. We just found out the other day in talking and looking at some other stuff, it dawned on us that they, you know, what about the court? Because the court gets audited as well, just like we do. And it's normally piggybacked on the village and it's a few more thousand dollars. But when they do the village, they do a few pages for the courts and it's done. Well, the last company to do it, their records show that the last time the courts were audited was twenty-fourteen. So we're talking ten years. So I'm talking, I will be talking when we have our financial conference call with the auditors this week as to what we need to do. Again, why New York State isn't asking any questions, how they just allow this stuff seem to go, I have no idea. You couldn't do it at your own home. I don't know how this happens in a place like this. So that'll be one of the things we'll be taking a look at to get them current as well. Okay, so that's that. So on the announcement regarding TD Bank, I think everybody is aware that they're closing. Their last day will be July twelfth on twenty-twenty-four this year. We have been in contact with their vice presidents of real estate. And at this point, the conversation was, you know, basically asking them, what are they gonna do with the building? So they're gonna sell it. But these guys seem to be amenable to say, well, what are you guys looking for? So they're looking for ideas, you know, do you want a restaurant? Are you looking for a retail store? Are you looking for a national firm or a store? You know, another kind of food place, a Panera's? I don't know.
Is it big enough for the police department? They need a new building?
Not really. We looked at that, trust me. And that's another subject that we're looking, even potentially here again. We just had a appraisal done at the police department. So we have kind of a value of that. Susan met with a couple of real estate people over there just to get an idea of what that building is worth. Problem here is, again, is parking for the police department, plus, you know, with their cars, plus staff and everything else. So advertising is now on the airwaves. Gonna be talking to Barry who owns a piece of property next door and see what his plans are for that property. If he would be willing to potentially sell it and see, you know, what this package would be. Because the police department would need to be down here, the patrol would be upstairs. Court potentially could still be down here, but we need to, we would need to hire an architect and work through all of that if everything would fit for the police department.
Can you probably elaborate?
Yeah, good.
So we did have a professional engineer come in. The second floor is buildable. It is buildable. There's some, you know, funky things you'd have to do as far as reinforcement and stuff, but it can be finished into office space. The biggest thing is we need to increase sixty more parking spaces to accommodate square footage upstairs.
That's the problem. And we have looked at the banks.
What about?
What about that house on Main Street?
Which house?
Sixty-one?
Sixty-one.
That's privately owned. We can't force somebody to sell that to us.
I like your thinking, though. It is a nice piece of prep. It'd be a hell of a village.
I would advise the board not to have any more discussions about sixty-one East Main until next week.
Yes, Matt? I do work in Barry's building and I insure his building. And my husband works in that building and a few other people work in that building. But he travels back and forth to Florida quite bad. He's building a huge complex down there.
Is he?
His wife is down there with six parents. I think he will be done down there soon.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's a possibility.
I'll make a note, cool, cool, Barry.
I didn't like that idea, but what am I gonna do?
I have his cell number. Something will pass tomorrow. Good info. Thank you. All right, so that's the story with TD Bank. So for the board or anybody out in the audience or anywhere within the village, if anybody has some thoughts or ideas about, you know, what potentially would be of interest for a new business in the village? It could be, you know, we could take all recommendations. Yes?
Hey, John Donaldson, four Emerson Drive. What about Bank of America?
Same thing. It's for sale.
They're out already.
Yeah, but they've been out for probably a month now or so. But yeah, they're, that building's up for sale. I've heard there's supposedly a sign, potential in the window, but I haven't seen it yet. I didn't get downtown tonight. But we'll see. We'll see what they have. And just on the other side of its rumor, or not rumor, but Stewart's has been supposedly talking about moving down to Salisbury at the intersection, right by the, what do I want to say? By Station, the mall across the street. There's a building on the corner. There's an empty lot behind it. And supposedly they're talking to the town or the owners of the property. I don't know if any deals have been set. I was talking to the manager today.
They need information.
Oh, okay, one sec. So I didn't see if I had a poll, Eddie. I'm sorry about that. So I spoke to the manager today and she said that they're, what she's been told is that they're not gonna be moving. So I'll, we'll take that and we'll see where it goes. I'm actually gonna reach out to the town and see if they were in front of the planning board, what's the, what's the story? How far, what are they doing?
Yeah, well, I double-checked again today and it was a week before last, like the fourteenth or sixteenth.
Yeah.
That representative spoke and had, you know, boards and everything. He showed everyone and made a nice presentation and said that his next presentation would be a lot more detailed. So that was a quick decision to change their mind, but it's, it wouldn't have been a nice place to have a gas station.
Yeah.
Yeah, they had a preliminary presentation.
Okay. So I don't know, don't know if the property's been sold or obviously it would be pending their approval to get a gas station in there, so I don't know. But I'm gonna reach out to the...
Now I'm confused. So...
Well, they're not gonna...
That's what the Stewart's was, gonna be a gas station too.
Right. I mean, they would put a gas station down there. Basically what they have there may be a little bit larger. But the sale of the property wouldn't, they wouldn't buy the property unless they had the... But the sale of the property wouldn't, they wouldn't buy the property unless they had the approval to build.
Right.
Right? So they're gonna wait for that to happen before those two lots, if they're separate, you know, could be joined, they gotta, you know, do all sorts of Z B A type stuff and planning board stuff, so. We'll see. But I'm I'll I'll reach out to the manager again and I'll touch base with the town and see what the story is with that.
They he did seem amenable that uh if they were gonna do it, to consider using some of your uh new architectural design guidelines.
Okay. They can use them in Bloomingdale's, that's fine. If they like them, they can buy them. Cool. All right, thank you. Thanks, E D. Uh, let's see. Next is Bank of uh Bank of Green County Charitable Foundation. So we applied for a five hundred dollar grant and we were accepted. And these dollars would also be going for the solar school crossing uh up at uh Chad School. So that's where that money will be utilized. Next is our uh, almost monthly now, which is a good thing, because it's uh a lot of people like it. So the mo- the D M V unit will be here. Uh, that'll be tomorrow, Tuesday, from ten to twelve, and then one to three. And they do everything except for written examinations to get that for you. And they will be parked towards, kind of towards the back a little bit. Uh, let's see. So start with resolutions. Twenty four dad zero zero three seven, both raise the purchase of a seven foot by eighteen foot tube top trailer from Paul Conglosi Trailer Sales at, and of course not to exceed five thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for the Village Police Department reimbursed. This purchase will be funded by the Police U T V Sam Grant. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second? Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you. Next is resolution twenty four zero zero three eight. Resolution to authorize the purchase of a twenty foot storage container from Giant Lock Box that of course not to exceed three thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars for the Village Police Department funds. For this purchase will be received from the New York State P D U T V Sam Grant. Reimbursement of this purchase will be refunded or be funded by the U T V Sam Grant. Not same Grant, but same Grant. Uh, have a motion, please? Have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thanks. Next is a resolution twenty four zero zero three nine to authorize the approval of an annual service maintenance agreement from Gen Tech L T D for six of the village generators at a cost not to exceed three thousand two hundred and forty dollars annually. We had received um two bids, one from Heat Power and the other one from Gen. And uh Gen came in low lowest and responsible bid. Okay, you have a motion, please?
Motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Next is uh resolution twenty four zero zero four zero. Declare surplus and no value to the village, Washingtonville Brass water meters at the Department of Public Works. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
I have one.
Hope.
Well, you're getting rid of all of them now between now and getting a new meters, what if you?
These are bad. These are.
Oh, they're not?
Yeah, these are junk. Yeah, these are junk.
I thought they were used.
No, 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 we're doing that. We're using everything because it has the three wire system. So all technically we need to do is change the head and it becomes a Badger meter.
Right.
So that's the plan.
Yes, Mike.
Three large street. Tom, um, how do we figure these got no value? I mean, even scrap metals, this is.
Scrap.
Two dollars, oh, you're gonna.
It's scrap, yes.
Okay, so you'll you'll get.
Not something that we would wanna bid out. We're just gonna.
Oh, you just.
We have a container. We'll take all our metal products and bring it in.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, man. Uh, let's see. I'm not sure we'll get that part. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? That was a conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is resolution twenty four zero zero four one, new authorization to approve solicitation license for Francis Ellis for distribution of ice cream truck throughout the village of Washingtonville based on receipt of certificate of insurance, which we did receive today. And also background checks were completed with no issues. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Have a second? Question, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Thank you. All righty. Next, twenty four zero zero four two, resolution to authorize the approval of facilities form for Hudson Valley Hawks. Baseball games and practice on Sunday from May fifth through August thirty first, eight A M to seven P M. Have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Tom, we straightened out about the little league with them?
Yes, so the story is, is that the girls softball has the priority.
Okay.
And if they need to bump the Hawks, the Hawks get bumped.
Okay, just so it was a case, was an issue?
Yep. Yeah, they were on board. I had conference call with them, so they were all good. I'm sorry? No, it was all dead. That was. Yeah, we wanted all that. Right, because if the girls aren't gonna use the field, then he could have practice in a game or whatever he wanted to go. So. Comments are over, I think. Um, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay. Next is a resolution twenty four zero zero four three, to authorize the purchase of the Badger Orion Cellular Soft software system and meters. Starter kit not to exceed seventeen thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions?
How many meters are we talking about?
Ten on this starter kit.
And how much, how many meters? What's the cost per meter? Half of that.
Three fifty?
With the um cellular, with the clip and everything, it comes to three fifty per meter.
Per meter.
So we're just gonna start with ten?
Yeah.
But that also includes.
We've budgeted, right, yeah.
It includes the software package. So ten is the actual physical number of the meters, but it's the software package and the training to get that all set up. And then you can add on after you get that.
Do we have a potential timeline when we're switching over or?
We're gonna switch over immediately once we get the software up and running and and whatever training needs to happen on the reporting side.
We'll budget it for all those meters then, for?
This is coming out of the Spindler revenues that we've been receiving.
Okay.
Yes.
A hundred thousand?
Out of the hundred thousand, it will come out seventeen thousand, yes. Correct. Correct. Otherwise, it's project, basically it wouldn't get off the ground.
So we budgeted for that Spindler money at the budget hearing that was going towards these meters. That was that was a lot of order.
It was.
The sale of water was budgeted for water meters?
Uh, I wanna say probably, we, let's put it this way. We knew the money was coming in. We knew we had a hundred thousand dollars.
But we didn't know.
At that point.
At the time. We were at a deficit at the time. We didn't know where the money was gonna go.
No, we knew it. We had the money. We had the money as of twenty three. When we came into office, the money was being deposited in the water budget, and that's where that money had.
But at the time of the budgeting, we were in a fiscal crisis at the time.
We we had gotten the loan.
We already gotten the four point four million.
We did budget in our regular order department budget. We placed it for one hundred meters.
For the new system or the meters that we have?
For meters in general.
In general.
And what's the price difference between the meters we have and the new ones we can get?
They're approximately the same. Not really.
That's hard to believe, Tom.
I'm sorry?
That's real hard to believe. The cellular meter is is, you're gonna tell me it's the same price as an analog meter?
If the meter and the reader, okay, the old ones that we get, the census meter and reader run us in the neighborhood probably of around three hundred and forty dollars.
Yeah. The meter is the meter. What it's reading and what's connected to it is an antenna versus a device that's stuck to your house that we have to manually walk around and read.
So the cellular, do we pay for a service? Is that a monthly service, yearly service?
No, this is what you're gonna get for the starter kit, okay? You're gonna get the the starter kit itself. Then you get the um, uh, there's a spreadsheet, a training spreadsheet, online delivery of that. You have uh the, there's an engagement fee that they charge as part of the starter fee. Um, they train and install the standard billing integration to the system. Then there's training for um for Chris's staff and with along with training uh materials. Then there's ten Badger free bronze bear meters at uh, those are at uh, this is just the bottom. So those come in at sixty-seven dollars, but the whole meter itself is what we described. So what I just kind of went through is the basic beginning system. If we don't need to enhance the software, all we're gonna be doing is adding meters to the system. And the software can handle, they've already done cellular surveys throughout the entire village. And they say everybody can connect to this thing.
So we don't have to pay a service to connect this cellular power? They're just gonna let us connect there?
Yeah.
As the resident, no, you don't pay any additional. There will be an app you can download.
The village, I'm talking about the village paying for it.
No, we don't. No, it's not.
So that will, so Verizon or T-Mobile is gonna allow us to connect to that antenna without us paying anything?
Correct.
Right, it's through the Badger.
Badger, they take care of it.
Yes.
Uh, on the, you're talking about just changing a head on it. But you keep on speaking of the guts of the meter being worn out.
So on the, right, so.
What's the sense of doing, you know, remit electronically versus these general walking around and still having bad guts in the meter?
For the new meters that we've replaced since we've been in office, right? That number will get new heads because they're new meters. Anything that is not new will be planned to be replaced. So if you were to call tomorrow and say, hey, my meters running backwards, we would come to your home with a Badger.
Might not complain about that.
It might not complain about that.
I never get that call.
So don't don't pick your water meters up when you go home. But uh, yeah, so that's that's the plan to hit it as we're going. If we did Big Bang Theory, this is like a one point three. Obviously, we don't wanna go borrow a million bucks. And then what it'll end up doing over time, it'll raise your rate, or not your rate, it'll raise the volume of water that you're using because these meters slowed down over twenty, thirty years. And now you could be saying you're using, say, five hundred gallons a day, but you're actually using seven hundred gallons a day. And that performance is in there based upon what's going out of the wells and what's coming through the sewer plant. There's a, there's a big variance of about thirty-five percent of water that's not being built for. And this will take care of that that imbalance. And then.
After all, the meters are changed.
When when all the meters are changed. Or as the meters are changed, it'll be an incremental thing. We don't have the staff. We don't wanna go out and spend a half a million dollars on a company to do it. We know it's gonna take longer, maybe five years, but at the end of the day, it'll it'll be potentially done and the majority of things that are breaking or we can get to. Our plan was to go by the books, right? We have how many routes?
Fifteen.
Yeah, fifteen routes. So our thing was, let's knock off a route at a time, so we know that's gonna be up on cellular and we can wipe it. So our plan is to kind of do that, but in the interim, if your meter goes and Vinny's meter goes, we'll go to the house and we'll put the new one in.
And what would the meter cost me?
For you, nothing.
I'll change it tomorrow if you want.
Okay. Okay.
So, one more.
Yeah.
So you're saying that the the census meters, the regular old census meters?
Yeah.
They've more than doubled in price in the last three years, because they used to be a hundred forty dollars.
The i Pro's?
Now you're telling me.
Yeah, the i i Pro.
Now you're telling me they're they're three hundred and what? Ninety.
But three forty, the meter and then the reader for outside.
No, no, yeah.
Right, there's two components.
That that reader for outside is is not, that doesn't bring it up to three hundred dollars. The meter itself.
The meter in itself, I'd have to pull the invoices. Last time I checked, they were over two hundred bucks each, like.
Well, you just said three hundred.
Chris, do you remember the order we did for the i Pro's, what they were? Okay.
When you put the meter and reader.
We'll get you the the difference. But the whole, the whole idea going to this regardless of the 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 price, right? It it's it's about the technology of what you wanna do. And you mentioned earlier, or maybe it was from Sean, you know, what's it cost our guys, eleven guys, ten guys, to go walk for a week? And what are we losing? You're losing everything. And then you're in ketchup. So if it's cellular, you have the app on your phone, you can know every gallon, every fifteen minutes of what's going on. You can set an alarm on your phone. So we don't have to wait ninety days to get a complaint. We'll know about it because it'll be showing up on our software. Two, if you have it on your app, it'll show up on your phone and you'll say, hey, you know, I'm down in South Carolina and uh there's a hundred gallons just used in my house.
How do you, how do you plan, if you're gonna go by book, how do you plan on getting, you can't get into these houses now to replace a meter?
It ain't gonna be easy, that's all I can tell you.
Again, this is why we're changing our water codes.
Yeah, and part of it, you know, we don't wanna get to the point, but you know, and I hear you. We're doing it right now with you with the, you know, uh with the E P A uh lead pipe situation with the water mains, right? Coming into the house, we're supposed to inspect. We're we're doing it as we replace meters. But we sent emails, we sent letters. Um, and we probably get into thirty percent of the houses. And you know, the only way to be a heavy hand in this is to say, listen, if you don't, on your next bill, there could be a fine, whatever number that could be. To to spruce somebody to say, I gotta let these guys in the house just to check the meter and get it done. Because otherwise, if we have no, no other recourse to get into the house other than, you know, potentially, you know, doing a fine. And what we wanna do is go in, change it, and get the heck out. You know, a normal meter, fifteen, twenty minutes, and we're done. And it's another meter on the system that we don't have to go and visit. And we can take the card right out of the book.
It's just a long process because you're gonna go into some houses and to change the meter, they have to turn off the water. Some of the houses that have been here for forty-five years, if they touch that main valve, it would. It would, it would. So now that they have to, homeowners gonna have to replace that. When they see that, they're gonna say, you gotta be kidding me.
It's part of the process, you know? If we don't do it now, it'll never get done. Could have been done fifteen, twenty years ago. I think back in fourteen. No, previous to that. Oh, yeah, I think it was fifteen, maybe when Joby came there. I had the proposal from Badger to do this. And the board decided no, and it was the Big Bang Theory back then because we weren't in that tough of a financial in fourteen or fifteen, whatever it was. But the board decided no, we didn't wanna go in that direction. So, I mean, by then we would have been on the system and would be on cellular and D P W could be more product, uh, more productive. I mean, we wait and we procrastinate and we can come up with a thousand different ways and whys we shouldn't. But that still doesn't fix the problem. And then that, all that means is we're gonna, the only way we're replacing everything is by somebody having a problem and being reactive versus being proactive. So. And the starter kit is a is a good start. It's not, like I said, Big Bang. It's not an enormous amount of money and uh, soon as we do this, we gave them a heads up. And we'll start the process to get the system up and running. It runs on the cloud. So it's a matter of them setting it up and getting information out of our U B Mac system and uh start the process.
Plus it integrates with uh the admins.
Right, and the other thing, it integrates with admins, which is a huge, huge advantage. And we'll be going live on the utility applications, actually trying to get it done this month.
And we'll call tomorrow.
If everything goes well. Okay, so we got to the point of the second conversation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Resolution twenty four zero zero four four, to authorize of employment of Mark Morale as a Department of Public Works laborer commencing this date, May sixth, and an hourly salary of twenty thou- twenty-five thousand seventy-four cents. this date, May sixth, and an hourly salary of twenty thou, twenty-five thousand seventy-four cents. And again, this is filling any vacancies. You will start your first day, will be next Monday. So next twenty-four zero zero four five resolution. This is a scheduled.
We didn't actually make a motion and pass a motion for the.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry about that. So we have a, a motion on hiring Mark.
Absolutely.
Second? Second? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, thank you, thanks, Chris. Chris and Chris. Next is twenty-four dash zero zero four five resolution, scheduling a public hearing regarding the dissolution of the Village Volunteer Architectural Review Board, ARP, effective this date, Monday, June three.
Said public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what we're doing, yeah. Have a motion please?
Motion.
Second? Question, comments, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Next twenty-four zero zero four six, resolution authorize the budget transfers and amendments as necessary to effect necessary transfers of funds into paid warrants, have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second? Second, and questions, comments on the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Christine, we'll just need to, the resolution over to Leslie, right, for her files? Great, thank you. Um, we got that one and we have one more, I apologize.
Not on the agenda.
Came in at the last second, it's not on the agenda, but this is a resolution twenty-four zero zero four seven for a meeting for the village board, village of Washingtonville will convene on May sixth, twenty twenty-four, seven PM. So the resolution was duly offered and seconded to wit, resolution setting public hearing for the consideration revising local law and extending village moratorium. Whereas the village previously adopted local law number one of year twenty twenty-two, local law number two of the year twenty twenty-three, local law number eight of year twenty twenty-three, entitled local law establishing a six-month moratorium prohibiting the review and approval of certain land development applications in the village of Washingtonville. Have a motion please?
Motion.
Have a second? Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Alright, next would be, any additional public comment? Yes, Paul?
Uh, couple of things. Uh, there was a, there was a meeting here on April fifteenth and a public hearing in this room. And we left and on April sixteenth, there was an executive board meeting at eleven AM. I guess here, it's not on the calendar, it was on the calendar then, still not on the calendar. Just curious why.
That didn't have to be on the calendar, there was a pump notice.
You can't just have an executive, the executive meeting, you have to open up a meeting and then go into executive session.
Right, and we did.
So that should've been on the calendar as a meeting.
Well, it was posted as a meeting.
It was a piece of paper hanging on a bulletin board. Okay.
You, maybe wanna?
It, I wasn't in the executive session, but Brian signed off on it.
Who's Brian?
Brian's my boss.
I'm just curious, I mean, it seemed like a secret meeting, nobody knew about it.
Well, the executive session, we could advertise, but it was, it was a last, unfortunate last minute thing, but at the end of the day, you know that executive sessions, um, for personnel.
It was posted when we left here on the fifteenth, I was just curious why they couldn't have done the executive session after the meeting on the fifteenth while everybody was here, because that's when it was posted.
Cause we needed to speak with council and the council that we needed was not present.
Okay, that's the story, okay, so the second thing I have is the, uh, have you had any discussion on the creation of a village manager position?
No.
Are you gonna have any discussions on it as far as qualifications, scope of employment, uh, yada, yada, yada? This was brought up at the budget meeting when we talked about the.
Yeah, and we kinda went through between that and every other position that the board seems to be conducting right now is that, uh, we didn't really, and we don't believe at that point that we were in a position to move in that direction. Um, because we didn't know where we were budgetary wise, right? So we held off on, on any of those discussions with the water clerk. Everybody that we've been hiring has been part-time. You know, a village manager? All I wanna say to that one is, take a look at Ellenville. Their village manager. Uh, breed it and, you know.
I understand, but we were kinda pumped up on it at the board, at the budget hearing.
Yeah, well, again, it's, it's a buck fifty. If the village, you know, residents want, wants a village manager, then, um, you know, it's, it's a buck fifty and then we might as well hire the water clerk and we might as well hire the secretary for planning and all the boards. And we, we displayed and showed the information that you're talking, adding at least several hundreds of thousands of dollars between benefits and, and salaries for these positions.
Alright, but you mentioned Ellenville, but what about all the other towns that are successful with their village managers?
I'm not saying.
You mentioned one town.
Yeah, I did.
Alright, but there's several others with those advantages that are very successful financially, everything, so.
Listen, that would take a load off the life, like, trust me, at the end of the day.
Manager across the board, it's a bad idea.
No, I didn't say, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, from your perspective, a village manager's gonna solve all your problems and all I'm saying is that, just like anything else, you've gotta, you've gotta pay attention to what's going on.
You're not gonna be here forever, there's, the village board's continuously rotating. The village manager is here to protect the village, alright, there's gonna be a continuous between every board. Alright, he can handle, you guys set the policy and he's running the village as a manager, financially.
Well, come our next bid, budget cycle, we'll take a look at it.
We're not saying.
I'm not saying no.
Not right now.
Well, it didn't make any sense after we're raising taxes, doing what we did, had a full, uh, full room of people basically concerned about what the heck was going on, we spelled it out.
But prevent it from happening again, that's, that was.
The state is watching us.
What, what needs to happen is to keep that from happening?
The state is watching us and it would benefit the village to have an experienced person running the village.
If we had the funds, I would love a village manager. We don't right now.
Right now.
Not in our budget for now.
We'll take a look at it, we, we're live on our system two months, right? So we're just now starting to get information from expenses versus budget. Just gonna start taking a look at that stuff now. In six months, we'll have a better picture. Come the end of the year, we'll have a better picture. I mean, the, the rock of having, like Christine, like you're saying, the village manager works out pretty well. And what the village manager will do, and that has to be created and defined by the village board of what those responsibilities are, because I've been to meetings and talking to mayors that think and have been brought into positions where it's a runaway village manager controls every aspect of everything to the point of, why, you know, almost like, why you need a board?
Cause the board sets policy, the village manager is running the finances and business aspect of the village.
Beyond, way beyond that, way beyond that. I mean, if that's where it ends or stops, you have your village treasurer. Now, there is consistency, just like a village clerk. That's somebody that is, would potentially be like Melanie Lang. God rest her soul, she was here for thirty-some odd years, maybe more, but she was the person managing the dollars. I'm not disagreeing with you, but it's, it, there's more to it than just saying it's an easy thing to potentially do.
Well, we should explore the idea, find out what the going rates are.
Yeah.
Start looking now for the next five, don't wait till the budget starts and then, alright, let's do it and it's gonna take another year. You know, it'll be too late.
Or put somebody in that's not qualified. Uh, can I continue? So getting back to that, it's, it's just, I'm curious, getting back to that executive session you had on April sixteenth, what was the reason for that? In general, would you share tell us?
Litigation.
It was litigation.
Litigation?
Yep.
Uh, and the other thing, the Bank of America, have, have we considered or are we considering what's gonna happen if somebody wins, somebody buys their property? We don't know what they're gonna use it for, we don't know what it's gonna be. Uh, how many people use that as an entry to the village parking that they might close that down?
It's a good question, needs to be looked at, I mean, it's been that driveway forever and a day.
I know, everybody uses it, but I can, I could buy that building tomorrow and say, no trespassers.
Yeah.
Assuming that it needs a site plan from the, I guess now the zoning board. The, it's well within the power of the zoning board to condition any approval of a site plan on providing an easement allowing access to the driveway.
That wouldn't be considered a historic easement, which has been.
I don't know. Historic for what, in what way?
Yeah, I just heard Mr. Cazza use it to get the, right away for the solar company to go through the building he sold. He says a historic easement and does show now on the maps. It's a historic easement, just cause it was used for so many years and.
Probably like easement by prescription.
He called it historic easement, just because it was used.
I mean, when the complaint is reviewed and they're looking at historic overlays, that potentially could be part of it then.
Although it used to be between those two buildings, I thought.
Well, it used to be right next to the old village inn, right? That, that used to be where the cars used to come in and out.
Do, do we know why the banks are leaving?
Cause.
Cause most of them were doing online banking, they don't need the.
TV's a big problem.
We're doing order anymore.
Yeah. I was in Chester and Wilkbank was a key bank, they left. They were kind of, yeah, KeyBank is gone.
Might help it.
Yeah.
Chase just built that new bank.
I'm sorry?
Chase just put the new bank on the, not that long.
Yeah, but, well, whatever, whatever marketing and reasons that they have, um.
Different business strategies.
Yeah, who knows? But it wasn't anything per se, when I've asked, you know, I've asked directly, you know, is there anything? Did we do anything wrong, do you guys wanna get up and go? And he said, no, it's just a, just a business decision that's been in the works. Cause everybody's online, no one goes to the bank anymore, take a picture, you check, deposit it. It's just, uh, almost past that.
Generally, they keep branches per thousand individuals in an area, so if you don't meet their new minimum criteria. And I think Bank of America had announced, there's somewhere like two hundred and seventeen branches that were gonna be closing in a year.
The recent stores are closing.
Amazon.
Yep.
Anybody else? Alright, we do have a reason for executive session two. Have a motion to move into executive session.
Motion.
Have a second please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone, thanks for coming.
Good night.